Board and now come to order, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Troop, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Griffin, Alderman Triplett, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Banger, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Krusen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Moore, Alderman Griffin, Alderman Conway, Alderman Florida, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman French, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Krusen. Twenty-three present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by our own Reverend John Watson from the twenty-sixth ward. He represents Maple Temple Church of God and Christ. Reverend Watson.
Let us pray. Gracious God, heavenly Father, we first thank you for the privilege to petition you through prayer. You have revealed in your word that rule and authority in government are in keeping with your divine order. Therefore, we come to you placing in your hands the needs of our city, asking you to give wisdom, ability, fair judgment to those who govern us. We know, Lord, the task is difficult, the duties are many, and the responsibility heavy. We pray for our great city officials, that you will support them with your might, and refresh them in mind, body, and spirit, so that they may dedicate themselves wholeheartedly to you and their tasks and assignments at hand. Make our city a truly godly community, in Jesus' name, amen.
We spend our regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolution calendar. I move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar. Intend a second on the motion. Second about Aldermen from the twentieth, Aldermen from the nineteenth, with you and the other Aldermen that are going to do the resolution, please approach the dais. The Aldermen from the fifth and some others are going to be coming also.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. This morning, I am extremely honored, and I wanted to ask before I even go through the presentation, if the women colleagues of the board who feel comfortable will come to the podium as Because this has to be done right, it has to be special. We are honoring this morning an icon, a gentleman who made St. Louis his home for a long time, who has been here on many, many occasions and entertained our metropolitan area. He has been a legend along with his family, and identified what it means to be all about it for over fifty years. That's incredible in itself. But when we talk about Ron Isley, Mr. I, there's so much more to say. I tried to memorize some of the songs that I loved over the years, but then I realized that there were so many of them that I didn't know the name to, but I could sure sing a few of the words to it, and the list went on and on and on and on. But I do want to take the honor and the privilege to take a moment to read this recognition on behalf of Mr. Ronald Isley and his family. And unfortunately, Ernie could not be here with us today, but he will be receiving his resolution as well in the mail. But let's just take a moment and go through this journey that we have, most of us have experienced. Whether you're young, old, in between, you have experienced and enjoyed the many, many tunes. Whereas Ronald Isley, born in Cincinnati, Ohio, is a very accomplished singer, and is known as the lead singer and founding member of the family music group, The Isley Brothers. And whereas, born the third of six brothers, Ronald, like many of his siblings, began his career in the church. He began singing at the age of three, winning a $25 war bond for singing in a spiritual contest at the Union Baptist Church. By the age of seven, Ronald was singing onstage at venues such as the Regal Theater in Chicago alongside Diana Washington and a few other notables. And whereas in 1954, when Ronald was only thirteen, he and his brothers Rudolph O'Kelly and Vernon formed the original lineup of what would become The Isley Brothers. Beginning as a gospel quartet, they began singing alongside their father, O'Kelly Senior, also a singer in his own right, and their mother Sally, the group's first pianist. Ronald carried on as the leader of The Isley Brothers after Vernon's 1955 death in a bicycle accident at age thirteen. In 1957, The Isleys moved out of Cincinnati and headed to New York, where they began recording duet material for several recorded labels. After several failed attempts, The Brothers hit paydirt after cultivating a song that had been created after the Brothers' inspired performance of Jackie Wilson's Lonely Teardrops at a 1959 Washington DC show. After signing with RCA Records, the group released Shout, a song that has since become a legendary rock and roll staple, and I know everybody in here has danced to Shout at some time. So here we go, and we keep on going. In 1986, Rudy Isley's exit to fulfill a dream of ministry in 1989, Ronald has carried on with The Isley Brothers' name either as a solo artist or with accompanying help from the group's younger brothers, much more prominently, Ernie Isley and, of course, Ronald. In 1990, Ronald scored a top-ten duet with Rod Stewart with a cover of his brother's hit, This Old Hard A Man. And in 2003, Ronald recorded a solo album, Here I Am, Backrap Meets Isley with Burt Backrap. In addition, Ron Isley became a sought-after hook singer for hip-hop groups such as R. Kelly, Warren G., Tupac, and others. Ronald released his first solo album, Mr. I, on November 30th, 2010. Also in 2010, he received a Legend Award at the Soul Train Music Award. Now many fans are looking forward to his performance in St. Louis in September. We believe it's September 17th of this year. But we also know that we wanted to recognize an icon, because we are normally way too late to say how great you were. But I thought that we had this moment, this opportunity, and I was having a conversation one day, just talking about things, and I always hear a song playing, and I never know the name of it, but I realized that it was Mr. I. So here we are today, and I'd like to, on behalf of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen, the City of St. Louis, Mr. Ron Isley present you this resolution. Now, Mr. Isley's family is here with him today, his wife, mother-in-law, and others. And if any of them feel comfortable and want to come up to the podium, feel free to do so, but I would like for him to respond to us. And I have to share with you, I got this thing, you know, you're gonna have to leave me with a couple of notes.
All right.
All right.
All right. I'd like to thank Ms. Marling Davis, and I'd like to thank Darrell Oliver and Louis Reed. And this is such an honor for me. It's such an honor for me and my family and my brothers. And I live here in St. Louis. I've been here since 1997, so I guess that's about thirteen years. This is my wife, Candy, and my son is running around over there somewhere, little Ronald. And I love St. Louis, and we'll be performing here, I think, in September, September 11?
Seventeenth.
No, September 17th. And I also will be probably singing a song with Aretha Franklin at the Peabody. So it's an honor for me, and your words can't explain how this makes me feel, you know. And God has blessed our family through the years, and I wanted to just say thank you to all of our fans and all of St. Louis and all of you wonderful people to honor us. God bless you. Wow. She, now she wants me to leave with the food. Well, one of our songs went something like, "Drifting on the memory, ain't no place I'd rather be than with you, loving you." Thank you so very much. Thank you. And God bless you.
I think they want to take some pictures right here as well.
Okay. Hot candy?
Yeah.
Oh, you just stand right here.
Right here.
Mm-hmm.
You want a good one here?
Okay.
Come on down.
Okay.
So he doesn't have to put on tunes.
Oh. Yes. I grew up on his music, never ever thought I'd ever have an opportunity to meet him, and I think that's very exciting to have an opportunity to meet him. Also would invite any of the members of the board or whatever, if, you know, take an opportunity to at least have, shake his hand on the way out. He has done a great job for the City of St. Louis. And this nation with some of the beautiful music that he brought to us. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With that, we return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introductions? Aldermen from the sixth.
Then, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to introduce my special honored guest, Ms. Natasha Leonard, who is shadowing me for the day. Thank you.
Aldermen from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guests today Anthony Lancia with the AUC, and Donald Summers, and David Holmes with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters.
Aldermen from the twenty-second.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest this morning, Mr. Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Aldermen from the nineteenth.
I'd like to have as my honored guest, Mr. Anthony McDonald, who all we know about him is great. He is an author of two books now. The first one was Risen, that talks about the history of the African-American community, and I just received a copy here of his second book, A Father's Right. Mr. McDonald has brought down some of his summer camp interns to watch our government process. Welcome, Mr. Anthony McDonald and visitors.
We also have with us a number of other honored guests. We have Iborra Dehan, and she's a young author. I don't know, I don't see Iborra out there, but I know you're there someplace. If you're there, could you please stand, Iborra, so people can see. She's a young author, and she wrote this book, The Little Book of Self-control. She's here with her mother, Sherri, so please give Iborra a round of applause for her book. Here she is. She just walked in, and her mother Sherri. So if you get an opportunity, take a moment and say hi to Iborra. Any further introductions, any further introductions? We also have Irene Saul and Sierra Watson with us here today, and then, you say, Lou Watson? Sierra is the daughter of Reverend John Watson, so give her a round of applause and welcome her to the board today. We have Brandon Flynn from Local 42 with his newest representative. Brandon, thank you for joining us here today. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Aldermen from the tenth, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we gather here on the last day and we prepare for our summer break, it is indeed my pleasure to have Mr., see you in September, Freddie Stefan.
And I did all those introductions and I forgot to introduce my intern for the summer, Max Reed. Max, would you please stand? Max is an intern. Third year in a row. Aldermen from the thirteenth, recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I move to approve the minutes of the June 13th meeting.
Move by Aldermen from the thirteenth, second about Aldermen from the twelfth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A and B of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
With dispensal line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would any Aldermen from the twenty-fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I request we move Board Bill 37th floor substitute down to the third reading consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Anything further? Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? With dispensal line items nine, eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 125 sponsored by Alderman Flowers, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4,500 through 78 North Broadway containing a severability clause. Board Bill 126 sponsored by Alderman Triplett, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2621 South Compton containing a severability clause. Board Bill 127 sponsored by Alderman Young, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1116 Olive containing a severability clause. Board Bill 128 sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3454 Iowa containing a severability clause. Board Bill 129 sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4126 Botanical containing a severability clause. Board Bill 130 sponsored by Alderman Florida, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3851 through 53 North Utah containing a severability clause. Board Bill 131 sponsored by Alderman Carter, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5716 Saloma containing a severability clause. Board Bill 132 sponsored by Alderman Young, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 500 North Broadway containing a severability clause. Board Bill 133 sponsored by Alderman Howard, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Bevo Mill Scattered Sites III redevelopment containing a severability clause. Board Bill 134 sponsored by Alderman Cone, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3900 Ray containing a severability clause. Board Bill 135 sponsored by Alderman Triplett, in ordinance of establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Arkansas and Halliday, and by regulating all north-south traffic on Arkansas containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills 125, 126, 128, 129, 130, 131, 133, and 134. To the Housing Committee, Board Bills 127 and 132, and to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 135. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 107 sponsored by Alderman Krusen, in ordinance amending to the law, animal laws of the city, amending sections of ordinance 67799, 66384, 62941, and 62853, and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance pertaining to the same subject matter. A new section requiring the spaying and neutering and microchipping of all dogs and cats. A new penalty section, a new section prohibiting the pet store sale of dogs and cats containing a severability and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispensal line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill 102 sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, in ordinance to regulate employer-employee working relationships between the city and all employees under the civil service, including a compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits of leaves of absence, and authorization for a deferred compensation plan containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 109, Committee Substitute sponsored by Alderman Young, in ordinance affirming adoption of redevelopment plan, redevelopment area redevelopment project, and a redevelopment project amending ordinance 67681, authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and St. Louis Food Hub Tiff containing a severability clause. Board Bill 110, Committee Substitute sponsored by Alderman Young, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, amending ordinance 67678, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $7,200,000 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for a City Hospital RPA III redevelopment project phase two. Board Bill 111 sponsored by Alderman Young, in ordinance authorizing the execution of amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and between the city and near south side Improvement Corporation containing a severability clause. Board Bill 112 sponsored by Alderman Young, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $6,76,244.80 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment notes, increment revenue notes for Lafayette Square Historic District redevelopment project. Board Bill 117 sponsored by Alderman Young, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Cass Avenue North First, Maleffi North Second redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill 93 sponsored by Alderman Young, in ordinance recommended by the Port Authority Commission of the city, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into a lease agreement between the city and Fred Weber, Inc., for certain land and mooring privileges on the unimproved ward for a period of ten years commencing on the date of execution with three five-year mutual options. Board Bill 106 sponsored by Alderman Young, in ordinance approving the petition of various owners of certain real property to establish the City Hospital Powerhouse Community Improvement District, authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement between the city and City Hospital Powerhouse Transportation Development District and contain an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 108 sponsored by Alderman Young, in ordinance authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement between the city and St. Louis Food Hub Transportation Development District, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing other related actions in connection with the transportation project and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 113 sponsored by Alderman Krusen, in ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and between the city and Loop Tiff containing a severability clause. Board Bill 114 sponsored by Alderman Krusen, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, amending and restating ordinance 67069, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $6 million plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for Delmar East Loop redevelopment project. Board Bill 115 sponsored by Alderman Villa, in ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan, redevelopment area redevelopment project, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and Korondalet Tiff, designating Korondalet Tiff as developer of the redevelopment area, authorizing other related actions in connection with the redevelopment of certain property within the redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 116 sponsored by Alderman Villa, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, amending ordinance 68094, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $838,851 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment notes for South Korondalet District III Phase I, Series 201A/B, and not to exceed $1,356,793 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes, South Korondalet District III redevelopment project, Phase II containing a severability clause. Board Bill 119 sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in ordinance amending the following ordinance adopted in calendar years 2002 through 2010 to include the Industrial Development Authority of the city in definitions of approved investor, original purchaser, and qualified institutional buyer, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 88 sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the director of airports and the comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport Cargo City lease agreement between the city and Southwest Airlines containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 89 sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the director of airports and the comptroller to enter into and execute the license agreement for the K-Lot facility between the city and United States of America Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 92 sponsored by Alderman Villa, in ordinance recommended by the Port Authority Commission, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into a lease agreement between the city and ACL Transportation Services LLC for certain land and mooring privileges on the unimproved ward for a period of ten years commencing on the date of execution with three five-year mutual options. Board Bill 95 Committee Substitute sponsored by Alderman Flowers, in ordinance approving the petition to establish the North Broadway Carey Community Improvement District, establishing the North Broadway Carey Community Improvement District containing a severability clause. Board Bill 105 Committee Substitute sponsored by Alderman Davis, in ordinance approving a petition of owners of certain real property to establish the 212 South Grand Community Improvement District, authorizing the execution Improvement District, authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement between the city and two-twelve South Grand Transportation Development District containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill one-twenty-one sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and Alderman Cruisin in ordinance approving the petition of an owner of certain real property to establish a community improvement district, establishing the Cheshire Annex Community Improvement District, authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement between the city and Cheshire Transportation Development District, authorizing other related actions in connection with the TDD project containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill one-oh-four sponsored by Alderman Young in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement, authorizing supplemental appropriation, amending ordinance six-eight-six-four-three, commonly referred to as the City Annual Operating Plans of Fiscal Year Two Thousand Ten Through Two Thousand and Eleven, appropriating and setting apart into new special fund eleven-sixteen Downtown Vending District Parks Fund from payments to be received from street vendors in Downtown Vending District, the sum of twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-twenty-two sponsored by Alderman Griffin in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement approving the modification of documents entered into in connection with the Police Capital Improvement Sales Tax Lease Hold Revenue Bonds, Series Two Thousand Seven, approving and authorize the execution of a first supplemental deed of trust and security agreement in connection with such modification and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the perfection consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I object to the, uh, board bill one-oh-five on the consent calendar.
On the per- on the perfection consent calendar? You said one-oh-five and one-oh-seven? You want to move to the regular?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please move board bills.
One-oh-five, I think one-oh-five is the.
One-oh-five?
Yes.
One-oh-five, okay.
One-oh-five committee sub.
One-oh-five committee sub, uh, Alderman from the nineteenth, move that board bill to the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to, uh, move for, to perfect the aforementioned bills other than board bill one-oh-five, committee substitute.
Move by Alderman from thirteen, it contains second on the motion, second by Alderman from eleventh, any discussion? All in favor, signal five percent. Aye! Opposed, motion carries. Uh, before we, uh, continue, we also have with us today, uh, a whole group of young authors who came here to join us today. Uh, they're, they're graduating from the risen foundations, risen publishing camp for kids. And could you all stand so that we can give you a round of applause and thank you for your work? So we're looking forward to your first books that'll be published right after the camp and, uh, and congratulations on finishing the camp and we're looking forward to a lot of great reading from each and every one of you throughout the years. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one-oh-five, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Davis in ordinance approving the petition of owners of certain real property to establish the two-twelve South Grand Community Improvement District, authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement, agreement between the city and two-twelve South Grand Transportation Development District containing an emergency clause and a severability clause.
Madam Clerk, could you move to board bill one-hundred, committee substitute?
Board Bill one-hundred, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Griffin in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration the sum of one-hundred thousand dollars a quick claim deed to remise, release, and forever quick claim to Grace Hill Neighborhood Health Centers located in City Block Five Eighty-Nine, which property is known as Seventeen Seventeen Biddle containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the fifth, you recognize on perfection of board bill number one-hundred, committee substitute.
Yes, uh, I move for perfection of board bill committee substitute one-hundred.
Move by Alderman from the fifth, second by Alderman from the twentieth, Alderman from the pli- fifth, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, this, uh, board bill is for a building at Seventeen Seventeen Biddle that is currently a community health center. Years ago, the city, um, was in the business partially of helping to provide healthcare for people who were uninsured or underinsured. When the city decided to get out of that business and close the centers, there were, um, a number of agencies that came. In this area, this piece of property is, uh, landlocked because it sits on a lot with the community center that is ran by the resident tenant board of Carr Square, and on the four sides of this, um, community center, there exists probably around fifteen hundred, um, rental units, which are affordable rental units, low-income rental units, and public housing rental units. And so this community center and health center have served the residents in that area. It's been very fortunate for them because most of the people are right there in walking distance. And I'm in favor and support of the city finally selling the building to Grace Hill because Grace Hill has provided healthcare services there for many years. Over those years, they have put about five-point-nine million dollars into improving a facility that they do not own. Uh, many of their board members have not been in favor of them continuing to invest their money in a building that the city owns and the city, um, leased them the building in very bad condition and the city has not made any more investments into the building. So in my mind, it only makes sense that we would sell them the building as we have on many other projects. Uh, there was a quest- question raised, um, by Alderman Wessels in the committee about the price we were selling it for. They are, they have offered us a hundred thousand dollars for this building and a hundred thousand for one in the seventh ward. Uh, my personal feeling is that we should have sold them the building for one dollar as we have sat there and voted in ways and means for years and sold developers' buildings for one dollar because they were going to develop it and invest it. In this case, this building, when you talk about, um, the value of the property, it really is, um, a mute point because, one, the city through ways and means voted to give them a twenty-five-year lease where they pay ten dollars a year. There's currently still nineteen years left on that lease of ti- for ten dollars a year. And so that in itself encumbers the value of that building. There is also a restriction that that building will forever be a he- be used to provide healthcare services, which then means you could not sell that building to a developer who would maybe make a office, uh, building or warehouse building, something that would bring more value. You couldn't, you could never do that. So all that building could ever be is to provide healthcare services in that area. Um, they currently are going to have received a grant for two-point-one million dollars from the federal government, which because the city owned the building, the federal government asked that we come back and change our lease to say that it would always be a healthcare service, for healthcare services, and that's what we did. But in the future, they continue to write grants and it is imperative that they own the building so that they don't keep meeting these challenges. Um, I believe if you look at some of the reports that were submitted to the board talking about health disparities that exist in North Saint Louis and particularly in zip code six-three-one-oh-six, when you look at the data that has come out of our health department that is broken down by zip code, this building is in the middle of six-three-one-oh-six. When you look at the health, um, department's data, it reflects that we have the highest number of health disparities compared to other citizens in this city and other citizens across this country. We have healthcare numbers that are compared to third-world countries. And me myself, I do believe that the city has a responsibility to have, uh, access to quality healthcare provided for all people, for that would include the low-income people in this area. They have, um, received the grant for two-point-one million dollars. They are using three million dollars of their reserves to put further improvements into this building. They will also be borrowing money to put further improvements into this building. So I don't understand why anyone would oppose this from happening. Like I said, they provide healthcare services for years for people who don't have insurance or who are underinsured. They do a great job, they've been nationally recognized, and they, they can afford to pay more money. They're using their reserves to invest in these two buildings. And for anyone who knows about healthcare services and centers, and we continue to see them getting cuts even this year from the federal government, most of the, um, monies that are being slashed are, a big chunk of them are in healthcare. And so right now, a lot of the federally funded healthcare clinics are running around trying to figure out what are they going to do, how they still going to provide the services necessary. So there was some, um, discussion in ways and means, uh, as far as them paying more. I don't believe they should be paying more, I don't think they can afford to pay more. And I believe to continue to ask someone to make investments into a building that they don't even own, we own, is unfair. And I think the city has an obligation to make sure that we are providing healthcare services to the underinsured and uninsured, especially when our health department has the data and research to show that in these areas, especially six-three-one-oh-six, there is high numbers of disparity. And so I would ask for support of this bill. I don't think that, um, the billion, the building has much value when we have nineteen years left, which would, at the end of nineteen years, they will give us a hundred and ninety dollars. They're offering us a hundred thousand dollars now. And so I think that, um, it is a fair price. I think that it certainly is a good use of the building. It is, um, an agency that, once again, not only do they provide the healthcare, but they provide other, uh, services such as job training, computer literacy, um, trying to teach residents why it's important to have bank accounts. And so when you look at everything they do and you look at their budget, it encumbers many, um, things and a holistic approach that they provide to try to help people sustain themselves and be self-sufficient so that they can be, you know, good citizens and tax-paying citizens within their communities. And so the need for funds that they have is large and every dollar goes to helping the residents in the community. And so once again, me myself, I would have liked to seen us sell them the building for a dollar like we have with many buildings when we've sold them to developers who are going to make improvements. They are making improvements, they are using three million dollars of their reserves for a total of a five-million-dollar project on these two buildings, and they will also be borrowing money to make the necessary improvements on these two buildings. And so, um, that, that's all I have on this for now, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from thirteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, I offer amendment number one to committee substitute on this board bill.
Could you please review the amendment number one? Well, we don't have a motion on the floor yet, I need to understand what the amendment number one is. Could you please review amendment number, make your motion for amendment number one?
Move for the adoption of amendment number one, committee substitute.
Move, move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from thirteenth, please proceed.
Uh, this amendment would raise the sale price from a hundred thousand dollars to two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. Why two-hundred-and-eighty thousand? Two-hundred-and-eighty thousand is twenty percent of the appraised value. The appraised value of this property is one-point-four million dollars. And all, all I'm asking the board to do is agree to, to amend the bill to twenty percent of the appraised value. I thought we had a fiscal crisis. I thought we had financial problems in the city of Saint Louis. Here we are, we're asked to sell this building plus another one, it's on the, even more expensive, uh, a one-point-four-million-dollar building for a hundred thousand dollars when we have a financial crisis, when we have big fiscal problems. Look, this, there's, there's a number of reasons why to do it. Fairness to the city taxpayers is one, but the ability of, um, Grace Hill to pay is certainly another. If you look at Grace Hill's finances, the last nine-ninety, nine-ninety is a form that, uh, is submitted to the feds, all nonprofits have to do it. The last nine-ninety they submitted was for calendar year two thousand and nine. It had seven-point-eight million dollars in unrestricted fund balance. That's about the same amount of money the city has in our fund balance. You know, and this is a relatively small organization. Their revenues are about thirty million dollars a year, but they've got a fund balance of over seven million dollars. So they have plenty of money to pay a two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars for this piece of property. So that's number one, they have the resources to do it. Number two, someone on the committee, a supporter, I'm, I can't remember which one, asked a question, and I thanked them for asking this question, they said, "How was the sale price negotiated?" And the answer was, well, Grace Hill came in and offered a hundred thousand dollars, and we said, "Fine." Now, you know, if you've got a piece of property, or let's say you won a piece of property and you come in with, you, you approach the owner with, with a, uh, dollar figure, you really don't expect to get it for that first offer, do you? I don't think so. And neither did Grace Hill, but through the grace of God and the comptroller, uh, that's what we have here today. And I should say the Ways and Means Committee. Uh, so, you know, there's no reason not to approve this amendment. You'll be helping the taxpayers, you'll be helping our fu- our budget, uh, and I'm going to ask for, for, again, on the next bill, I will ask the same percentage, twenty percent of the, uh, appraised value. It's a reasonable, as far as I'm concerned, it's too low, but I think it's a reasonable alternative to what's being presented to you today. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the third.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I rise in opposition to that amendment. I think that's an awful, awful thing to do. If you take the life of one child, just one child, is worth far more to the city of Saint Louis and to our country than any amount of money that the Alderman from the thirteenth thinks would be better in the hands of the city of Saint Louis. After all, in our charter, it says that we shall, not should, not could, not maybe, provide healthcare for the indigent. They closed City Hospital, they closed City Hospital Number Two, they closed Home of Phillips Hospital out, uh, down there. I say, Grace Hill has not asked for this facility to do anything other than provide healthcare for the indigent in coordination with what our charter requires. And I think we give it to them for a dollar. We certainly haven't helped. All we need is I.A.M. to flo- that, to, uh, sell to at emergency five, six times, and it almost pays for that. That little amount of money that we're putting into that building to allow Grace Hill to provide healthcare for the people. All we gotta do is look at the zip code in that area, six-three-one-oh-six. There are more healthcare problems in that area than almost anywhere in this entire city of Saint Louis, and it's close down there where you have MSD. We don't punish them. It's close down there where you have Mallard Chemical Company, and both of these spew all kind of mess out into the atmosphere, making people sick. There are more people with cancer and asthma in six-three-one-oh-seven, six-three-one-oh-six than anywhere else in this city. What is it that you can possibly say that would weigh the health and life of a child against some additional money? against some additional money? Grace Hill isn't renting this thing to have a party at. They're renting that to try to address that healthcare problem over here. And we certainly don't need to be inhibiting them from being able to do what should be done and ask to provide healthcare for people who can't help themselves. And those people in those areas, if you look at the demographics, the number of people on welfare, the number of people on food stamps, section eight people, that says they don't have anything. Why punish them? Let Grace Hill get this building, I would say a dollar. But like the Alderman from the 13th said, city is in a financial crisis, but we'll be in a healthcare crisis if we don't do something about these problems that we're having with the healthcare. Certainly, most of us in this room have insurance, but most of those kids down there in 63106 don't have no insurance. And we're just fortunate enough that Grace Hill has even come into this area to try to do something about that problem. I ask you just vote against that. And if somebody wants to amend it to give it to them for a dollar, I certainly support that as well.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
Not that I disagree, and I sat in Ways and Means and I voted against it there. I don't think this will affect Grace Hill's ability to do business there. If I thought it would, I wouldn't have voted against it. I know based off of what they told us in that meeting, what they have in reserves, I don't feel that this will hurt or impede them doing their job at a time that we're furloughing employees and things are just tough. When I run into people in the halls here, everybody keeps asking me about the pay bill and asking me, "Are we going to get furloughed this year?" I get concerned. If I thought that this would affect Grace Hill, and if I thought this would affect, I agree, make it a buck, give it to them, whatever. But they have the ability to pay it, and it won't affect them. They're still going to be there to treat the children. And, you know, I just, I stand and I hope everybody supports this amendment only because I honestly believe they have the ability and this will not affect their ability to do what they do. And they do a good job at it. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 1st.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. May I inquire of the Alderman from the 23rd?
Alderman from the 23rd, will you yield for questioning to the Alderman from the 1st?
Absolutely.
Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Alderman, you indicated that this building was worth more than $100,000 that was paid for it. Is that correct?
I'm not hearing them real well. I'm sorry.
Are you saying that the building is worth more than $100,000?
Yes. They told us at that meeting that the building, this building was worth a million and a half, and I believe the other one appraised at $3.4 million.
Okay.
Because we asked that question.
Who owned the building?
The city owns the building.
Okay. When the city owned the building, it was a city clinic, right?
Yeah, I assume that. I don't know the prior use of the building.
Well, they all were city clinics. And this is where I'm trying to take you to. Everybody was saying, "Well, it's not enough money." Well, these were city clinics. And the clinics were in such bad shape and condition that they could not, and the city could not afford to keep the clinics open. Is that correct?
I believe that's the case, but they, that's not the case with Grace Hill. They can not only, not only can they afford to keep it open, they have a surplus. They have over a $7 million in surplus. They have as much as the city of St. Louis. We're in a fiscal crisis.
It's not.
It's not. I'm telling you, they have, according to them and what I know from Ways and Means, they have the ability to pay this. If they didn't have the ability to pay this, I wouldn't argue it. But since they have the ability and since we're furloughing people and since we have to be the ones that stand up to the news media and they say, "Why are we giving away stuff?" I can't in good conscience say that. Now, if I thought this would affect the healthcare over there, I would be against even charging them anything. But I honestly don't believe that. That's just my opinion. I believe that not only can they afford this, it's not going to impede them in doing their work, but it's going to help us in the city to at least say to the employees when I'm walking down the hall that at least I'm trying.
Well, how can you say it's not going to impede, it's not going to obstruct the access to healthcare if you want to take the money out of a system that is already failing as a quote "safety net"? Do you know that this clinic is considered one of the safety net clinics in the city of St. Louis?
And I don't disagree, and I agree they do a good job, but it goes back to my original --
But I think the problem.
-- that I feel that they have the ability to pay this. And in my opinion, it's only my opinion, if it's not yours, vote against it, but in my opinion, I believe they have the ability to pay this and it will not impede them from doing their work.
Well, gentlemen, are you aware of the fact that Grace Hill is an FQHC clinic?
What does it have to do with their ability to pay this?
Let me explain to you what you're talking about, because you really don't know what Grace Hill is. Grace Hill is a federally qualified health center. It's funded by the federal government. If you look at the federal budget, the federal budget is currently cutting back on healthcare and cut back on the FQHCs. Now, if they're going to cut back on the FQHCs, they're going to need not surplus. These are reserve funds that they've been able to raise, and not from the federal government or the city government, but from philanthropic kinds of organizations. Now, the Alderman from the 3rd board was trying to give you some data about the health status of people living in and around zip code 63106. Is that correct? Now, if you go and look at the conditions and the health status of people who live in zip code 63106, it's not only the worst in the state of Missouri, but it is the worst in the entire country, and it is the worst in the entire African-American community, probably compared only to third world countries. And then, hold on. And then you sit and stand and make a decision about what Grace Hill does and does not do? Not, we're not talking about Grace Hill in zip code 106. They have Grace Hill clinics in other zip codes as well. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And so, when you look at the monies, when the city dumped the clinics on Grace, on the FQHCs, they were a disaster. It was a disaster. They spent millions and millions of dollars in the building, in the equipment, and to get it up to where it is worth the money now. So now the city after, well, I guess the city really advocated its responsibility to primary healthcare. The FQHC is a primary healthcare clinic. And if you don't address the needs of the poor people on, at the primary level, then they go into a tertiary or secondary healthcare, which is even more expensive for the city and for the taxpayers as a whole. So when you say you don't, Grace Hill is not, should be, can afford to pay more, I don't think that we should be trying to drain them of their reserves right now, given the gradual cuts that's going to happen at the federal level. So I think if Grace Hill have been innovative enough and they had enough community support to whereby they've been able to improve the building, improve the healthcare, and improve access to healthcare, not only for the people in zip code 106, but the FQHCs are located throughout the city. And all of them is going to receive a tremendous hit when the cuts come from the federal government. So I think we should be strengthening them because we gave our clinics to the FQHCs because the city couldn't afford to run them or didn't want to pay to run them. And the same thing when they closed Max Stop Law Hospital, when they closed Home of G. Phillips Hospital, now they, and then they got rid of the clinics. They dumped the city clinics on the FQHCs. That's what they did. And they were wrecked when they got them. Now that Grace Hill and other primary healthcare provider clinics and FQHCs have breathed new life into these clinics, now we want to go back and say, "Well, we want to take the money from them." And I don't think that that is fair. I don't think that it's right. I think it's short-sighted, and I think it shows a complete lack of information, bordering on ignorance, when you sit up and talk about what Grace Hill is and what they have, and you don't even know the history of Grace Hill. Grace Hill was a city clinic that refused and didn't have the money to provide the primary healthcare for the people in this city. And not only Grace Hill, every FQHC clinic in this city stepped up to the plate and took the liability off the city and the responsibility of providing a safety net for poor people in this city. And I'm telling you, gentlemen, that when you cross Lendo going north, the life expectancy of the population drops 11 years. 11 years. So how much and what is the value of 11 years of life for the people living north of Lendo?
How long has Grace?
And this is what we're talking about.
How long has Grace Hill been operating over there?
But this is what.
How long has Grace Hill been operating, how long have they been in operation over there?
I beg your pardon?
How long has Grace Hill been operating over there?
Grace Hill been operating in the city of St. Louis, to my knowledge, obviously over 30 years.
Okay.
Or more, more than 30 years. Maybe close to 50 years.
And you told me about the life expectancy. I don't even want to get in the argument.
What do you mean?
I believe that they can afford this. Everything I said through Ways and Means, if I didn't believe it, I wouldn't be far --
Well, you don't --
-- will impede their ability to do their job.
But, gentlemen, you can only believe.
You cannot keep charging people.
You can only believe what you know. And it's what you don't know that's frightening me because you don't know the history of Grace Hill, and you don't know the history of the city of St. Louis, and you don't know the history of the clinics that Grace Hill now occupied that was previously owned by the city of St. Louis who did not, could not, and would not have put the money into healthcare, or registered it on a baseball stadium, and other issues. So I'm just saying, listen to what I'm saying, the life expectancy of people living north of Lendo is 11 years shorter than people living south of Lendo. Now, that is criminal. It's criminal and it's crazy. So the question, gentlemen, what is the value of the life? Wait a minute, let me ask the question, and then you can answer. What is the value of the lives of people living north of Lendo? Is it the same as the people living south of Lendo?
You're telling me Grace Hill was in operation there for the last 30 years. Raising this does not put them out of business, but it does tell the taxpayers that we're trying to be fiscally responsible. If you're against the committee substitute, vote against it. Don't try to make it about health issues. It's about being fiscally responsible to the people of the city of St. Louis, fiscally responsible to the employees of the city of St. Louis. I can't face my people in my neighborhood again and say, "Well, let's make it $12. Let's make it $14." In my word, I quit doing tax abatement specifically because we're in a fiscal crisis. If we weren't in a fiscal crisis, and, believe me, I'm sure stuff's going to come up with the Cardinals, the Rams, or whatever, I plan not to support that either. We're in a fiscal crisis. Until we can face the employees in this building and face our neighbors and say that we're doing what's fiscally right, if I thought in my wildest dreams, if I thought this would affect healthcare in the city of St. Louis, I would be opposed to it. But no way, and there is absolutely no way, that I believe that this will affect healthcare. All it will do is show that we're being fiscally responsible. They have cash reserves higher than the city of St. Louis. They have million-dollar grants coming in. We're in a bad situation. We have to show we're fiscally responsible. I'm going to vote in favor of it. You should vote your heart if you feel differently.
No, I'm not.
I'm not asking you, or telling you how to vote. I'm telling you why I support this bill. And you're trying to make it sound like I'm against healthcare or against anybody anywhere. I'm not against anybody in this city.
Okay.
I'm for more police. I'm for free trade.
You didn't answer my question, gentlemen.
I'm, no. I'm for healthcare in the city of St. Louis. Don't make it about healthcare. It's about being fiscally responsible and their ability to pay. If you can prove to me that they don't have the ability to pay this, nothing about healthcare, if you can prove to me that they have the ability, that they don't have the ability to pay this, then you can change my mind.
Well, let me ask you a question. You talk about being fiscally responsible, right?
Absolutely.
Where does 70% of the city's revenue go?
You know.
I asked a question.
The question I asked you.
Wait a minute.
You never answered my question.
You want to talk about the budget.
Can you tell me the --
You talked about the budget. We spend almost 70% of the total city budget on police and firemen. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Okay. They are reactionary. Is that right? Is it right? Firemen don't come and ask you for, police don't --
Hold on. I don't want to get into discussion.
Okay, so, well, you got to talk about it, because we're talking about where are you willing to spend money? You got a fireman pension fund that's costing us hundreds of millions of dollars.
You know what?
Wait a minute, hold on. Police pension fund.
They save lives every day.
But what do you think healthcare? You think healthcare don't save lives?
This is not going to make any sense.
How could you just stand there and say that firemen save lives and police save lives, but healthcare don't?
And it does save lives.
Alderman from the 1st and the 23rd, keep your comments and your everything directed at the matter before us, and it's healthcare and it's amendment number one. So, so keep it confined to that. We're not here to debate the firefighters and all that stuff. We're here to debate this issue. So keep your comments to that, and keep it respectful.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, I, uh.
Again, my, if you can tell me that they're not fiscally responsible.
Alderman from the 23rd. Hold on. Alderman from the 1st has the floor. Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
I'd like to speak against the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Are you done with your questioning of the, do you have any more specific questions for the Alderman of the 23rd?
Yes, I'm through to Alderman.
Alderman from the 23rd, thank you. Alderman from the 1st, continue.
Mr. President, members of the board, it's clear that people who don't have good information tend to make bad decisions. And to sit up and say that the FQHCs, not just Grace Hill, it could be people, it's comprehensive and all the other ones, who provide a safety net for hundreds of thousands of people in this city are somehow making money, and that we should not try to assist them in building a reserve whereby they can provide this healthcare to people all over the city, especially a lot of our college students who go to these clinics for healthcare. The value of individual life, I think, is what we're talking about here. What is the value of one year of life? What is the value of 11 years of life for a large percentage of the population in the city of St. Louis? And if you're saying that the value of life on the front end in a proactive way in terms of addressing the healthcare status of these people is worth, is not worth a million dollars when we give more money to that, to the fireman pension fund on a monthly basis almost, then it's ridiculous. I think that we need to be proactive. Healthcare will extend and maintain the quality of life of millions, of hundreds of thousands of people in the city of St. Louis. And to deny the FQHCs monies to address those needs would be looking backwards and not looking forward.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to state for the record that I did support this, this bill and the Ways and Means Committee. Part of my reasoning behind that was that this is an agreement that was negotiated between the comptroller and Grace Hill. You know, the comptroller's office, who maintains these properties on behalf of the city of St. Louis, entered into good faith negotiations in an agreement with Grace Hill based upon, you know, Grace Hill's financial ability.